Welcome to the City of Hartsville work session on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty four. Thank you for taking time to be here this morning and we will get right to it. Start us off with the indication. Ms. Mack, if you would lead us in that, then we'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance and the purity pledge. I invite you to stand and pray in your faith as we pray.
Let's pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, God and God alone. Father, we thank you for this day. It's a rainy day, but it is a day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we come to do the business of City of Hartsville that we all love so deeply. We pray, Lord, that you would give us clarity. And the things that we need to do to make Hartsville a better place for all of its citizens. Father, we pray for our leaders, our council, our staff. Father, please go in front of this storm and put a hedge of protection around South Carolina, especially Darlington County in Hartsville. And wherever it hits, Lord, we pray that you would be as merciful as you can. Father, we thank you and we give you all the glory, honor and praise. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance, citizen of the United States of America. And to develop, for which it stands, one nation, on one earth, indivisible, with every day and every justice. Our pledge is to build stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting opportunities and finding solutions for the betterment of our state. All right, well, it's your turn, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you guys all for coming on a fun rainy day. You know, we were talking about yesterday with, back in early July, we were talking about how we wanted rain. And whoever's dancing now can stop. So, you know, we need to stop the rain dance because it's time. But um, just let you know, we are prepared going forward. We will be activating our E O C emergency operations center at noon today. And I do start planning on having some public posts about some possible closures coming out tomorrow, like I said. So just stay tuned and if you guys have any questions, of course, feel free to text me, call me. If you have any issues, you see anything, call me. We'll be working the entire storm in duration. So just let me know.
What's Dr. Kennedy School's doing?
So Darlington County, historically, they do tend to be on the
Follow Florence.
Follow Florence in that sense. Florence has gone ahead and closed for tomorrow and Thursday. Chesterfield went ahead and announced today at nine thirty, they were closing at eleven thirty. Instead of pick up, come pick up your kids and they will be closed tomorrow for e-learning. And when I say closing, all of them are going to e-learning. That's the new norm. Francis Marion went ahead and closed till Monday. And so I have a feeling that Darlington County will probably be closing tomorrow, probably Thursday. I do know from the teachers, they are preparing lesson plans for that effect.
So we're just waiting, waiting for the official.
When in fact.
That was all sudden.
It's poignant for the time and so we'll go from there. But today, I wanted to go ahead and talk about what we just went through last week. We went through our first planning sessions for the master plan. And so this is the course to redo of our twenty fourteen master plan, the twenty twenty four master plan. For those who were there, Bordeaux Group is doing this again. But the only person who's from the twenty fourteen plan is Irene, who is the lead. And she's brought in a whole new team. Thomas and Hutton, Arnett Muldro, and then there's also, I can't remember the name of the housing authority, R fifty five. Fifty, yeah. And so we had a pretty diverse group come with different backgrounds to come help it. The best part of the entire event though was the charrettes, the public input sessions. Because they were, as I've said, they were informative, they were eye-opening and they were humbling in some senses. We learned the most from those and the conversations that started after that. And those conversations started Monday and continued all the way up to last night and they're continuing now. So the conversations, I think, have been critical to understanding what exactly we need to do. But we have the PowerPoint and we want to go over this since Kenzie weren't able to come, Bobby weren't able to come. And then Colleen, I know you missed one of the presentations. So we're going to go through the slides very quickly, just to give you a full recap. This is based on the input from the residents. So the group brought it in and this is based on the comments. This is just the draft and this is not even the master plan. This is just based on the charrette. This always gonna, we're gonna, after talking to some people, this is gonna change. Because we have some great new input that we want to talk about. So if you would, Christopher, could you just kind of advance it for me? I'll let you know. We went into Hartsville, telling a story and I think this was kind of some good points about what the things they heard about. Go ahead and go to the next one. And this was how they set up the master plan, sorry. Having a prologue perspective place and possibilities can continue. Continue again. All right, this was the best part about most of this and I love data. So we really started getting into the hard facts that back up the, you know, the qualitative data, which is, you know, what people are feeling, what they're thinking. This is really backing up with data. And so we started looking at the population decline and as we've seen in the P D area, P D in itself is supposed to see a decline in population, what we're seeing. But all the indicators are pointing the opposite, especially what's happening with South Carolina and the Charlotte invasion. Charlotte is coming down and so the numbers and our permitting and what we're seeing are telling a different story, which is good. You gotta be careful what you wish for, but we are anticipating that actually, go to the next slide. We are anticipating an increase in population based on what we're seeing, based on We're good. The permitting and what we're seeing again is pushing it. This is the middle number. We were estimated made somewhere between almost ten thousand to between, you know, eight thousand. So we went Yeah, sorry about that. So that's a good number. That's an encouraging number and the good news is that we also have a lot of pent up demand that is incorporated in that number. So if we were to put in two hundred more housing units today, that pent up demand would absorb all that very quickly. So it was a good number and a good indicator that we are doing it. And the best part is we will be sharing this data and all this data will be included in the true master plan. So we'd be able to go dive into it if you really want to, but that's the highlight. Any questions about how, what we're seeing with that? You guys good? Okay, keep on going. This talks about some of our population demographics. As you can see, we are majority, you know, white alone fifty three percent and then black African American was forty one, six percent other. That other, as they explained, was really more of a mixed race. And so it really is pretty well split fifty fifty down the middle. And our average age is younger than the average age for South Carolina, which is interesting. Okay, keep going. This was one of the more stark numbers though that we got in the, in the presentation. So we've always known that there are quite a few haves in the city and there's quite a few have-nots. And we didn't really have a number to tie that to. And this is the number that we looked at and it really showed the stark difference between some of the issues we have. On average, United States, the difference between white household income versus black household income is about fifty six percent difference between the two. South Carolina, as you can see, is sixty six. Darlington County is ninety one percent difference and Hartsville is a hundred and thirty one. So there is a very far difference between the two starting places for different households. And that's an average that doesn't mean every household is experiencing the same thing. But what it shows you is that there are some households in this neighborhood, in this town, that are a severe disadvantage. And there's some that are complete higher advantage. So that number is factoring into a lot of decisions that we want to present as we go through the master plan. Okay, next. Breakdown of our employment. A really cool number here that they pointed out for us was that we actually have almost triple the amount of people coming into Hartsville to work as they're leaving. That's a really not unusual number, but it's a good number. That means that we have that growth, again, that signifies that we have a pent up demand for people who potentially want to live here. And we saw, there were some people they saw from this who were traveling up to fifty miles away to come into work in Hartsville. And maybe that means they want to live here. So that's a, that's a good number for us. Continue. Go back, eight forty seven is what? You know, he never went over that number. I'll ask. I'm not sure. Do you remember him saying what the eight forty seven is Sharon? Because we had the two hundred, two, two one eight force people leaving. Eight four three or eight four seven, I'm not sure with the number. He didn't go over it. The main number, the main number was the six thousand four ninety four.
Is that, is that six four, that's coming into the city for?
The six thousand is people who don't live in the city coming in to work in the city. Eight forty seven might be people who work and live in the city.
Yeah. That's not good.
No, it explains, I mean, we're a small town and we're near bigger cities. But for the people coming in, that's tremendous that we have almost triple the people coming into the town. That's that pent up demand we were talking about. But I will confirm the eight forty seven for you guys. And again, this is just some preliminary data. All this will be in the master plan when it comes out, it'll be explained. All right, if you can go on. So this is one that, we did talk about this a lot. And you guys have heard me talk about trade, trade area population. So whenever I'm presenting to a business, I don't talk about Hartsville's population on the census, which is seventy four, hundred and forty people. And that went down. I talk about the trade area population and there's many ways to skin this cat. You can do draw polygons around the area. Trip Muldro with Arnett Muldro decided to do a twenty minute drive time. And that's the map that shows you it. The important thing that he was noticing is that did not enter into other markets such as Darlington, Bishopville or Charah. It, so we didn't incorporate any of their data that might skew the numbers. And this is where we get into, what is your money that is leaving the area? What you're earning versus what's leave potential earnings that you're losing on the table? So we're losing about a hundred and thirty six million dollars worth of potential retail, which is a lot for our area. And that's, what it really was exciting about is that thirty two million of that was a grocery store. And so while it seems, a hundred and thirty six seems like a lot, it really isn't in terms of a thirty two million dollar store is one Aldi. That's it. And so it really is not a lot of, but that means that we can support an Aldi, which is good. Go ahead.
Okay, so let's get this slide.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the median household income fifty three thousand.
Yeah.
Retail sales in this area is kind of delineating. Okay, that's about twenty mile.
It's a twenty minute drive time, twenty minute drive time.
Within this area, we spending about six, six, six and thirteen million dollars.
Now, we're, in our area, we have an ability to spend about six and thirteen million with that twenty minute drive time into Hartsville. So that's potential spending. What we're actually spending is the four seventy six in this twenty minute area. And that's people coming in the Hartsville. It's not just Hartsville residents, that's all the trade area. And so what we're seeing is that is the, the difference is the money that we are potentially losing, that people are driving to Florence to go shop. Yeah, that's the leakage. And we did this numbers when I was in, you know, North Augusta, we had leakage to Augusta and it was a lot higher because Augusta sucked everything out of North Augusta. In a good way, you know.
But now Florence is not included in here.
No, but that's the, that's the money leaving the twenty minute area. So that's good. If we included Florence, that would really skew the numbers. It screwed the data up. So this, I've used models like this for, there's a Walmart model you can use where you actually draw differences between the half the distance Walmart. And my population came to about
It's the storm, that's what it is. So we're looking at a population thirty six, forty thousand people in our area. He has not done, thank you, third times the charm. He has not done what the anticipated growth for the area is yet. And so as you saw, we have an eighty five hundred potential growth for Hartsville by twenty thirty five. That number will also increase for the trade area population.
That's, it's all sorts of things. So it's grocery stores, it's clothing, it is dining, reestablishments. So it's there, thank you. I knew there was one. So as you can see, thirty two was the highest one, the grocery store. And that number, what it tells us is that we can support a kind of a smaller to mid-tier grocery. This will not get you a Publix. This will not get you, definitely not Trader Joe's or anything like that, or a Lowe's food. But it definitely can support an Aldi or a Lowe's type food, although Lowe's is pulling out of America for the most part. Dining options are, that's your, that's your sit-down restaurants. It's not a lot of your fast food. That is going to be mostly your sit-down, so that shows we can support more restaurants. This also shows that we do have some, we've lost some restaurants, you know, we've lost some sit-downs, but we've gained some more in the process. But that's people going to Florence to eat. When Sharon goes to Olive Garden every, every Tuesday or Wednesday, that's that leakage that we're having. She is the problem. Yeah, that's exactly right. Or a Monday. Yep. Well, if, when there's not an option here, people leave. And so that's what it is. So this, what this tells us is that there's possibilities for it. Like there wasn't any possibilities for any home improvement stores. Lowe's has a really strong foothold here at Ace Hardware. You know, I think the last remnant was taken up by Harbor Freight. And so you don't see those numbers the same way. You see this in areas that we can expand. So the data is showing us what we can support. So when we go after things, that's who I'm going after. Because that's who I can show the number support it. Okay? Yeah, any other questions about that? Okay, let's move on. This one's a little hard to read. This gets into housing. So the main thing that we heard again and again and again, the common theme throughout all this was we need housing of all types. We need housing for executives, we need housing for young families. We need housing for people just starting out, we need young professional housing. What it's showing you is that there is a, we have a pretty even split and a pretty, that's a normal number. That's fifty, I think it's fifty six percent is household owning and then the forty one percent is rental. That's pretty average across the city. The number is a lot less like in South Hartsville, for instance, only thirty eight percent household owns, the rest are rentals. So it's a little even, and it's, and if you go to like maybe Presswood, it's a lot different. So that's the average between the two. I can't read the numbers from here, but you can see that most of the time we have a lot of single family, which is the detached, single family, one, you know, one household. It gets down into two attached and some things and we don't have many multifamily units if you look at the data from there. So we are mostly a single family detached things that, but there's also a split between homeowner owned and rentals. If that makes sense. Any questions about that?
Kind of, not off topic.
Sure.
Have you talked to anyone at Chandler to see about how many of their units have been rented or leased so far?
My understanding is that almost all of them have, have already been taken care of.
I've read through several times and there's a lot more cars than not.
They were selling as, as we kept going and we were issuing permits as it was being built. And they, what they did is they kept paving up to the point they were done. And then they sell the houses and then pay them again. So like I said, that pent up demand is huge here. If we were to build a thousand units today, which is a good thing, which was kind of getting into a little bit, not off topic, but on topic. So the work we're doing with our infrastructure, the water tower, the wastewater stream plant. The good news is that we are putting everything in place to support all that growth. So we are good to go. So we could support the thousand units today if we needed to or close to it. The plan will be able to do it. And so those, a lot of eighty five hundred could come very quickly because of the pent up demand. So at twenty eighty five, it's not like a hundred people every year. Like eighty five hundred by twenty thirty five, it's not like a hundred or two hundred people every year. It would be a rush, then it would slow and it'd kind of be a different type of curve. So those, the demand is here.
So if we were to share maybe some of this info like with them in strike, what iron's hot?
Yep.
Maybe they may be interested in a different.
I want to, I want to share this with everyone. I want, I want them to have a printed copy they can walk around with. I'll, you know, laminate it for them. This data is showing what we've already known is that we can support these things and we, we should. But it gets into some of the things we're going to talk about in a little bit, which is we have to shore up some of our areas that need shoring up. Because the data is, that number is skewed between, you know, some of the more affluent areas and the other, and the areas that are not. If we don't shore up the areas that are in trouble, that data is going to continue to go the wrong direction for us. Okay, let's go to the next one. This is a breakdown and this, this will be posted online and I'll be happy to email to you the presentation. You see, you can really dive in and look at the things. All that's showing is the difference between owner, household rentals and owner things. And I think it's two to three different people per owners, if I recall. So that's just showing the difference between potentially South Hartsville and then the entire city going forward. And I was getting into that data about how many homes in South Hartsville versus the rest of the city are owned or rented. All right, next. The cost burden, this was getting a little above me because these are experts for me. But basically, this is your, typically when you're trying to buy a house, what is your average income? You know, you're, you're told you don't want to spend more than thirty percent of your income on a house, your, your, your house. What are you, house rich and cash poor, whatever they call it, or house poor? That's showing that there is a discrepancy between the city. It does have, I think, a close, some of our city actually has closer to a forty percent household income and it's even worse in South Hartsville. So they're paying close to fifty percent of their income is going to housing. And so that doesn't leave room for things like, you know, groceries and power and internet, all the things that are essential. So being house rich or house poor is a, is a real thing that we have to kind of overcome in this town. All right, next.
And a lot of those households don't have cars.
Yeah, and, and, and we're, we're looking into a statistic that was told. Someone, someone put it out, we're going to research it, that somewhere between one and six or two and six households in South Hartsville don't have cars. And so when you're talking about or running cars or access to transportation, reliable access all the time. When that, when that happens, issues like getting to a grocery store, getting the things like that really come into play. And that's where you see a lot of footpaths. So that's where we talk about walkability. And so we want to talk about walkability in our town, a big deal. This is the breakdown of houses, owner occupied versus renter. Again, they really dove into this pretty hard. We'll have a whole section on this in the plan. But largely, we're just showing that there is a discrepancy between owner occupied and rentals in different areas of our town, if that makes sense. All right, next. So then we got into, these are fun little word charts. I think they really like them. These are all words directly from residents. These are the, and the bigger the word is, the more often it was mentioned. And so you see that this is what people were saying about housing. Housing was the biggest area, city areas, transportation, supportive rentals, young professionals, homeownership. All these things were being talked about by the residents themselves who responded to the survey. And this is from the survey. As of the day we did this, there was a hundred and thirty responses in a two and a half day period. We're already getting more and we're going to keep this open for a month. And so we're getting some good information from folks who are interested and we opened it up to everyone. You know, people who are living in town, people who want to live in town, because we can't just take what, again, people who can't live here because of no housing available. But that's what they're saying. That's what your residents and people visiting the town are saying. And you can dive into that and kind of read it a little bit later on. Any other questions? And this was what locations need to focus on housing? What locations need to focus on housing? So this is where they talked about areas, this is specific areas. So Sixth Street, you said, I think that's, not sure the big street is, but walkability, Fourth Street came up a lot. Apartments, existing structures, which is something we talked about a lot, residential rehab on existing structures to make them habitable. But you know, it's just all workplace. Again, this is directly from the residents who are putting these comments in. The big thing that came up was housing, I think on Fourth Street, Sixth Street, those areas, and then walkability is a big factor here.
Okay, I want to make an assumption that when you say Sixth Street.
You know what happens when you do that right there? But go ahead.
I look at folks on Sixth Street, I go beyond that quarter of Sixth Street. I mean, I go, I thought it was almost like a reservation, you look at it from an area map.
Yeah.
Beyond that, like Marion Avenue, Eighth Street to the ditch. So when people talk about Six, I want to just focus just on Sixth Street only.
Yeah, no, that
It's south, really, much of South Hartsville, historical, as they call it now, so.
Yeah, that came up quite a bit and, and we have, we're going to talk about that in a minute, potentially changing some scope.
Which I don't know how Tim Scott missed that either. I just can't figure that out yet. Anyway, that's a different time.
It is a different conversation. You're right, but not wrong. Next slide, please. All right, so this got into a lot of what we're talking about today, drainage. And so we had Thomas and Hunter as a team of engineers and there was a civil landscape and they didn't have the architects, it's Bordeaux. But civil and landscape architects came in or engineers came in and looked at a brief analysis. They're going to be diving into this town pretty in-depth because as you guys know, we have issues with drainage. Go ahead. Yeah.
You know, a couple of years ago, we had this big brouhaha around the county. They came and did a drainage study.
Yeah.
Because I went around with one of the engineers.
Oh, I know, yeah, FEMA.
I went with one engineer. And also that they had a plan to do South Hartsville drains, I saw it, give me a copy. And all of a sudden that thing disappeared.
So that was something, we talked about that. It was the FEMA plan and the costs became so prohibitive with what we're doing and all of it was just maintenance. And FEMA was not going to fund our maintenance program because it's not ours, it's DOTs. So we were going to spend eight hundred thousand dollars for only get and three, three point eight million dollars worth of work that we could largely find a different way to do it. The program, the thing had started in twenty seventeen and we had only just started to finalize it in twenty twenty, Philip, twenty twenty two, three? Three. And the issue became, it became so cost prohibitive. Now, the issues that we can see in these things, a lot of it can just be maintenance. And so if we can work with DOT and get it fixed, we don't need a large FEMA grant that's going to cost us more money than it will fix. So we're looking at different options for that.
Yes, I forgot that at the time, they already had the money in hand, so you gotta be careful.
We didn't have the money in hand.
Did they have?
No. So when we, from the plant, when it was first done, that money was not available. It was going to have to come out of general fund. And we didn't have eight hundred thousand dollars or nine hundred thousand dollars, wasn't it? Because it was three, potential three phases.
It is for Hartsville, right?
This is Hartsville. Now, the county still is doing a drainage study with the same engineering firm. I have not heard the results of that yet. Countywide, I believe so, yeah. They, they
It's key to all that, okay. If it went down that way, they should have broadcast to us and our people should know, hey, this is what happened. So I won't have to come back a year later saying, hey, what happened to this fund, what happened to this money?
So we did talk about that in, about a year ago in ARPA to conversations. So we, I can refresh you on everything, but it was, we, yeah, we did. Yeah, yeah, and, and we called them many times too, because we had issues with them. But that, that was a conversation we had and it was more of a, it logistically just did not make sense anymore for us to continue with it. Because it would have been nine hundred thousand dollars out of our ARPA funds that we just could better spend somewhere else.
They went as far to offer people to move from their existing homes.
And that's what the Office of Resiliency does. So the office, and, and so all this, the reason why all this changed is because, so in twenty seventeen FEMA handled most of this. The Office of Resiliency started in twenty twenty one. And so the, the programs have changed and so they changed the nature of the scope. So that grant went on too long. And it, it, it went too long and then we had to redefine it every single step of the way. And by the time we got to where we were in a place we could move forward, it just did not make sense anymore to move forward with that grant. And FEMA was trying to, it was, it was almost kind of we're edging ourselves out of it to the end of it. Because we need to go with different options. The Office of Resiliency does offer home buyouts and rehabs. And that's the better option for most areas as opposed to doing the FEMA grant directly. The main issue is that we applied for it and didn't have DOTs full cooperation with everything at that time. And so DOT has a lot of the ditches that we're talking about here. And like I said, DOT, I was just out driving this morning, they were out doing work. So they are working, but they have more ditches that we have to deal with. Okay? But what they did when they looked at the study is they showed different areas that need attention. And you'll see in a couple pictures, pictures that we, we have current things that we made it cleared out last year or six months ago, but they fill back up. And the main areas they looked at were, of course, around Russell Road and Fifth Street, there were some study points there. Ninth Street ditch was, was looked at quite a bit to see how the drainage, because that ditch, while it has its own history and story, that is a, it conveys a lot of water. And so we need to figure out a way to address that. But going to the next picture. This was current drains that I already mentioned to Philip, can we clean those, please? And so we are, we are, and that's what we're doing now, our crews are out clearing up these drains. Because these things, we're going to find exactly where they are. But the, you look at that, that growth could happen over a two-month period and we have already taken care of it. I, in front of my house, I have a drain I have to clear out all the time and it just fills up. So, but the good news is that our water and sewer capacity and what we're showing is heading in the perfect direction to handle any growth we have coming at us. So that was a good news on our side. And that's all thanks to the work you guys have done with the skip grants and things like that. Million gallons per day. So we do about three point one million gallons. That's our peak and average. Our sewer is rated at three point five, we're going up to five point five.
Have we got a smaller window like an hour or two, just like some areas may get two or three inches in an hour?
Oh, as far as stormwater?
Yes, sir.
So the work we've been So, the work we've been doing, so you, is, if you guys, you know, think about all the work we've been doing with the ditches, and, uh, not the ditches, but like downtown. So we did do some work downtown. You guys had budgeted a hundred and fifty or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for it, we were to work with DOT, again, good partners here with us. Uh, and we did it for sixty thousand, and did the same amount of work. And since then, I'm saying this, and I know this is a bad thing to say, because it's right now, uh, we have not had an issue. Today we'll test it, this week we'll test it, there is no limp. Please, everyone, if you could. But I, I'll say this, when it flooded last time, that was like three to five inches within an hour. There's no system that can handle that much rain. There's no system that can handle twelve to fifteen amount of inch rain, amount of rain right now. Once the ground is saturated, once the water has no place to go, it's going to back up. There's all but a good chance we will flood in some areas. And the issue that we have is that this is largely irrigation, uh, prior irrigation ditches that were then reconverted into, um, uh, stormwater ditches. They have a lot of vegetation growth that comes in there, and like I said, you can clear it out, and it will grow back up within six months. So it's a maintenance program that we need to work with DOT to try and help. But, um, we've been able to handle a very large capacity base, or more capacity because of the work we've been doing.
Chemical they've got that'll make the ground sterile for a year or whatever. Have we ever tried something like that?
I don't know, I don't know if we've tried it in the ditches.
Too far ahead of us, Philip, or what?
I'd be worried about runoff and concerns with EPA, but. There's growth inhibitors is what you're speaking of?
My understanding is you spray it, and it's just like concrete for about a year, and then you just reapply. But I didn't know if any ditches, if they were, didn't meet that criteria where they were too far ahead of us where it wasn't gonna do.
I, I don't, I haven't heard of it being used in ditches, we have used growth inhibitor on some properties that we maintain, and it does slow the growth, but, um, other than salting it. You know.
We've got some stuff at the airport too, they say, they spray it'll.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you, uh, the work, what would really help is if you, you know, you, uh, you put in culverts and, um, actually piped in these ditches.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Any runoff?
I just didn't know how much of the foliage kept the water from running like it was supposed to, or just watch.
It's, it's the foliage, it restricts it in the buildup and trash.
Yeah.
I mean, when you throw some tires in there, a TV.
You know, in my conversation with, uh, Southern DOT locally in the county, with the ditches, especially like Ninth Street Ditch and Long Marion Avenue. A lot of people do illegal dumping.
Yes.
That's an issue.
It is.
They use it as a dumping ground, and, uh, especially in South Hartsville, I call DOT a lot to put in, uh, maintenance requests. To clean out the drainage, that's another thing we got a problem with.
Sure.
So, I mean, if you guys see it, just put it in a work request, it's the only thing we can do.
So I do.
Bottom of work request.
And, um, and codes, codes compliance and codes enforcement is gonna be a recommendation out here to ramp it up and potentially look at some different options. So that we're looking, actively looking at that now.
And also the education of.
Residents, yeah.
Residents. Especially about tires.
Exactly, no, you, you, I think you mentioned in the other meeting, there's absolutely resources to take it away, um, and it's something we should look at too, so.
And I, I did want to bring to note, Daniel, down on Fifth Street, like, just past Lotton Drive.
Yes.
There's a big ditch there. Well, back in two thousand thirteen, we had, you know, some major rains, major rains, and. In working with James Clemmons, we found out that there was actually no tiles there, had never been.
So that ended into something?
So, yeah, so DOT came in, and they, um, tiled that ditch, because what I had to do was to jet back at first.
Right.
Then prayed for rain, and God sent rain, and then it had nowhere to go, and we couldn't hear where it was flowing anywhere. And getting back in touch with DOT.
Right.
They came out, shot the grade, and, um, installed the tiling that was needed.
Right. Well, you know, and since we've.
From, from, from like, um, Myrtle Street, there's another, right, what's the street over there by you, um, Carter?
They covered, they covered one of those ditches up.
Well, the big one.
Trailer park it used to be.
Yeah, that one they closed, but the big one runs out from the trailer park over beside Ms. Osborne's house, that's the one that they didn't cover up.
The big issues that we have mostly, and since we've been really focusing on stormwater. Choke points, ditches, um, by Swift Creek, for instance, uh, the ditch that runs on the railroad track, we discovered a beaver dam. That was in there, and there was actually even a beaver dam near Sanoco, wasn't there? So, we, we, the work we, ever since we, when I, my first day it flooded, when I first started here. And since that day, we've been really working on trying to, um, and increase, I brought it, it was me. And so the, uh, but we have done some great improvements, Lanier Ditch was cleaned out, um, and that really helped, because that's a choke point. That slide that showed, we're showing the three catch basins where the water goes, largely from press wood on that goes into the lake, but then from downtown, that all escapes south and west, or east, to Snake Branch. All of it drains into Black Creek at some point, uh, but we have our choke points, and so, um, you know, there's certain things that we can do to help fix it on the interim, but it's going to need. As we talked about down here on Carolina, that thing goes from a thirty-six or a forty-eight inch pipe to a twenty-four inch, right, Phil? And that, thirty-six. Right. And that are, there's only so much I can convey, and so, um, our, we're only as good as our infrastructure.
Okay, one thing, uh, one more thing about drainage, we'll move on.
Sure.
Going back, uh, DOT talking about, on Bowles Street, uh, they did close out some of the dishes, but they got conduits down.
Yeah.
On Bowles Street, behind a lot of people home, it's part of that drainage system, I call it drainage system. So talking, talking to DOT, now they're trying to put the owners on the, owner of the house.
Yeah.
Keep the ditch, and I said, no, no, I don't, I disagree with that, that's your system. So, if this issue come up again, I think the city need to defend the residents, and look, I mean, we got the juice to talk to DOT, but it's your job.
We, we do, we, we have, we've gone so far as to actually assist with, uh, doing title searches. And proving to DOT that it is actually, should be theirs, or it needs to be theirs, and it's your water, and. What I truly recommend is that we attack it from multiple angles, is that we come from the bottom up, which is us working with the citizens, but also from the top down, which is from the state.
It, it was, especially when I was growing up in South Hartsville, they kept the lanes, so all of a sudden when I get forty, fifty years old, it's amongst the locals.
DOT, you know, DOT has a tough job, and they have taken on so much, um, in the seventies, it took on so much right away, and roads and ditches and whatnot, and so. I mean, as we've talked about, they're the, like, the fourth largest system in the country, and they're like the forty-eighth funded, or something, forty-six funded. So DOT has a hard job, and I know it's the system that we live in, where we have to kind of attack it from the bottom, and then also have some top-down pressure. That does further exacerbate and cause issues, but it's the only way to get things done in this climate, so I'm more than willing to do it to put up enough our citizens. So, I encourage you guys to reach out to your local representatives on the state and federal level to, um, assist with that, because we can only do so much, and it's gonna get a answer at this level. It has to go higher.
Let's try to stick to the slideshow, let's try to stick to the slideshow and get through the, through the, this content.
But stormwater will be included as part of the recommendations going forward, so, but go on to the next slide. Perspective, keep going. Again, this is what, uh, the residents said. This is what they heard when they asked about vision in the idea, and one Hartsville unity, uh, walkability, uh, prosperity for all. Safe, clean, healthy, that all, this is directly from your residents. Go on to next. And then keep going, uh, more stuff from the surveys describing one word, uh, again, this is what your residents are saying. Look at some of the words, though, I mean stagnant, there's some, uh, there is, it's not always all rosy, and that's good. And depending on where you thought quaint might not be a good thing, you know? We want to have all these things, but you don't get that in a quaint town. All right, next. This one extremely hard to read, that's all the data from the survey, um, when you guys get a chance, I invite you to read through that, cause I cannot read it. Next. All right, this is some stuff that was, I always liked this question, and I've seen it a lot in surveys, the magic wand, what would you get if you had? This is what some residents were saying, and this is, well, uh, kind of common themes throughout it. Better grocery store came up, again, housing and grocery store were the two number one things that were said. Uh, and then, you know, affordable housing and entertainment venues, they want something for twenty, thirty-year-olds to do, um, more to bring people back, and then, um, homeless population came up. And that's common, especially when it gets hot, we get a lot of that. Teresa, do you have a question?
Oh, no.
Okay, um, next. Main challenge, um, lack of employment opportunities and affordable housing. Crime rate, we talked about this a lot, um, we're a town of seventy-four hundred, and we have a high crime rate for a town of seventy-four hundred. But are we really a town of seventy-four hundred? We're really closer to a thirty-six thousand town, and so when you do the numbers, it actually is better, but I will say, and this is to credit to our chief. And the work we do with the police department, we are shining a light on everything that's happening, and we are making an impact. And so the more we do, it's going to get worse for it gets better, because we're showing what we can, or taking these things off the streets. So we're very aggressive with going after, um, things that should not be happening here, and protecting the people that live here. And so I think that crime rate, I think you will see a change in that, especially with our new regime, with, um, with Byron. Regime might, might be, our new, uh, our new, um.
Leadership.
Yeah, leadership, that's good. Yeah. Stuff with your dictator. And then the other one was, uh, you know, this was a rapidly declining infrastructure, now, I, I really thought about this one a lot, and so infrastructure means a lot of different things to different people. I'm thinking it means roads, cause really, our sewer and water are not in the worst shape they've ever been, I've been in much worse cities that have different things, but. Roads can be considered infrastructure to some people, and our roads are, in some places, really not good. And they have potholes and whatnot, and that's, again, working with DOT. But. Yeah, right. But, but I take that seriously, cause I mean, infrastructure, without the water and sewer to support this town, it all dries up anyway. So, um, I thought that was a very interesting comment, and it's something that we're looking into. All right, next. This came up a lot too, one of the other ones was lighting. Um, and you guys have already started addressing that with our downtown, um, obligating the money towards it. Seeing the difference between the South Hartsville and, uh, the rest of town. Um, and then family entertainment, entertainment. Now, I don't know if a bowling alley, that, again, this is not stuff that we can do necessarily, bowling alleys and movie theaters, but it shows the desire for stuff to do. And, um, and what that also says is that if I can show this to a entertainment venue, perhaps they'll, they'll point, they'll push the needle. So all this information is gonna be handed right to a developer or to an interesting party, that's what it's here for, and to our residents.
And I will say that, yes, this morning I was looking over some Florence, I was right, a much bigger city than us, you know, one comment off was, there's nothing to do.
Yes.
Right, they said, we wish you had a water park, I was like, wow.
We do have a water park.
Interesting that it, even in a town the size of Florence, they have that same, it's, it's consistent.
It's the same, yeah.
The more entertainment we can bring, family-friendly type thing, is a great thing for the city.
Yeah.
That's a good point, I think I, I texted Daniel a couple of weeks ago. I can't remember, so, so wait, sorry. Man, three people didn't know, they raised about Hartsfield Water Park.
Yep.
And I went, okay, uh, so it's kind of weird, and I've noticed myself that, uh. It's funny how people in Hartsfield don't really respect the zone, what we have here, which I think is really weird, most people come from out of town. Here, one lady said, the first time she brought her daughter here, I think the daughter was like six years old, she's been bugging her ever since to come back. So, we in Hartsfield gotta change our mindset too, about a lot of things.
Well, and, and I'll be honest, the, um, the, we were just at the annual meeting for the municipal association, and I got approached by more cities this time, asking about, I just saw your billboard. And we really did ramp up our advertising this year with billboards across the entire state to come to Hartsville, and then we had approached by several cities, how did you guys build a water park? And I explained, don't do it, because it's ours, um, but it's very hard, but I explained what it is, and what it takes to do it, because it, it takes a full team effort, and so. We just got a lot of notoriety from that water park this past, um, time, several, West Columbia was very envious of us on that, and it was very exciting to see that. Probably not, exactly, um, Bobby, have one quick comment?
Things do change, just like entertainment. When I was growing up, sharing a night, I mean, on the weekends, we'd go somewhere and dance, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
Different penews, and even Hartsville had three or four dance clubs or whatever.
Sure, yeah.
And that's all of those that fall by the wayside.
Sure.
So it's like you said, maybe, maybe revisit some of it, or get some public input or something, but, um, you know, but things do change, and it's not necessarily a bad thing. It's just the way things happen sometimes, didn't have video games when I was growing up. We got in the yard, played, or we entertained ourself, or whatever, and it's a different animal.
You're absolutely right.
You have iPhones and iPads now.
Yeah.
That's right, okay, next slide, please.
For the demonstration of the Carolina SAG, you can give us now.
All right, keep on going. Um, so this was talking about, this is a pet shed, so all that means is that they. Get, they got these ideas from, they got these places from people, from the residents, and then they dropped a pin in it, and said, that's within a ten-minute walk, which is what. Most people can tolerate, although I think Pete can only tolerate an eight-minute walk, um, as he said before, so. These, these are just examples, um, you know, they did Coker University, they Fourth and Railroad, um, they did Butler Heritage, Lincoln Village. What it all shows you is that if you were to walk from, you know, Byerly Park, you can't get many places within ten minutes. And so connectivity is a really big point here, uh, and that's all it really is supposed to demonstrate, we can add more points or change those points, those are not the ones, those are just examples. All right, next one. Again, this is what people described our character as, again, from the citizens. And so mostly positive there, for the most part, okay? Gateways was another important thing, this has come up in every plan we've had, is that identify your place and make a mark. The fourth, uh, the Fifth and Sixth Street, the one that leadership Hartsville funded, that was an idea back in, I mean, in the two thousand teens. And so, um, now we have a model, although I think we can look at, you know, tweaking it, changing it, whatever we want to do, but we need to start identifying our, our gateways. And those are recommended spots, you have out near CVS, Fourth Street, and then, of course, North Hartsville. There's nothing on the east side, and maybe we need to consider that, you know, so naming, naming your gateway, making your spot is a good, good way to start letting people know you've arrived. Okay? This was getting into, and this was a comment from Pete. We, we felt, we, we started drilling into some areas, Fourth and Railroad, and then we had Sixth Street. But again and again, comments came up that it was, they wanted to expand that kind of, um, scope. So what we're kind of looking at, we've had many conversations about this, instead of saying Sixth Street, let's go ahead and say South Hartsville. Because Lincoln Village is included as a catalyst, as a catalyst for change over there, and then start looking at Eighth Street and Seventh Street, same with Fourth and Railroad, we really need to look at all Fourth Street. Cause Fourth Street was, came up again and again with the governor's school of students walking to Walmart. I think with Fourth and Railroad, that is a completely, that's a, you know, we have to get a plan to sell it, and then sell it, and start making for development, that's gonna be largely a for sale and then development thing. South Hartsville is gonna be a, we're gonna be with that for the duration type project, so it's a different approach. But instead of focusing on Sixth Street, like you said, Pete, let's expose, let's, um, expand it. And that was a comment that came up again and again, we've already looked at Sixth Street, we have a plan for it, what about the rest? And so, we really need to start addressing things at the root of the problem, which is housing. And housing in South Hartsville is a, is a impediment, if we don't fix that, we're not gonna have a, um, things, and again, that's, goes in back to your statistics. So, we're gonna be, this is just again the first draft, but we need to look at, I think, more, and that's gonna be our recommendation. And I was gonna see if that was something you guys had any comments on, or thoughts about.
Well, Dan, I have some, um, thoughts about homeownership, that there are government programs that will help, um, homeowners.
Yeah.
Seniors sixty-two years old, they can get a grant for ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To do home repairs, um, renovations, to make the home more safe.
Sure.
And you might be able to borrow as much as fifty thousand dollars with a one percent interest rate for a twenty-year loan.
Yeah, something that came up a lot again and again also was, and this, this touched on everywhere in the city, was, um, home renovation plans. And so the city had really taken a pretty active role in that in the past, and the desire to see that come back. And so, and that's something I've, uh, you know, we have a very easy time with commercial, because it has a public, um, return, an ROI. There's not a lot of ROI immediately on residential, but there it really is when you think about what we're trying to do here, so. That was potential for a plan we're looking at doing, absolutely, a recommendation to you guys, rather. Okay? All right, any other questions? All right, let's move on to the next one. Possibilities, this was getting into some of the plans, um, this was taken back out of the CPAT study. All right, let's move on to next one. Um, possibilities. This was getting into some of the plans. Um, this was taken back out of the CPAT study, uh, from two thousand fifteen. Um, and so what we're doing, which was a really cool thing, that's, we have these plans that are not bad. Um, they just are, some are old and they need updated data. So we're taking the best parts of it. Um, connectivity came up in that. We're going to look at that. And those are, you see the three plans that all address this that we can build off of and work with. And so we don't have to reinvent the wheel and do, have to lose those valuable comments from the citizens at that time. So we'll be doing that here. Our next. Um, again, connectivity is key. Uh, walkability is key, shared spaces. Um, and we have a lot of north and south, um, traffic. We need the east to west is what we're seeing to get to Byerly Park. You know, that's our main recreation, a hub. How do we get people there safely? And as we were driving down Washington Street, that's a beautiful, um, asphalt that can be really be enhanced and utilized and made safer because there's some issues there as well. So connectivity is key. Next. Next again, why not? Okay. Um, this is an example of Fourth Street, but really if you look at this, this is a plan we could enact anywhere. Fourth Street needs, um, sidewalks. There's just no way around it. And I don't want to expand Fourth Street. I know it's a traffic hub, but I'd rather put in multi-use pedestrian paths. But that same plan can be used on Eighth Street. It can be used on, um, Sixth Street. It can be used anywhere. And we have actually more drawings for Sixth Street that we want to do and Seventh and whatnot. But the idea is to create something here. Um, the best cities have multi-use paths and walkability paths and you see people enjoying it. Um, and then it becomes part of a, um, um, part of the city's character. Um, so I think we have ability to do that. And I don't know if necessarily I've ever seen a plan, take this and we want to enhance it, taking it to our state representative, saying, see, this is what it could be. As opposed to just us saying, we need this, you know? Let's show them, let's bring them what it, let's bring it to them and show them what it could be.
And he just mentioned Washington. And when we've always talked about Fourth Street, I've always thought of like two big sidewalks, like how would it ever work? But when I saw this picture the other day, I was like, oh, one like multi-use.
One multi-use makes sense.
The green will ride off of the swamp rabbit trail and y'all, we were on it every day. Um, so it is absolutely great to have something like that. And like he just mentioned with Washington, we already have it here.
We want to connect the loops, yeah.
For the first time and how great it looked on that. And to be able to, you know, do it like that here on Fourth Street and that's the other street.
Well, this has been. This has been a conversation we've had for many times, bike paths and multi-use paths and connecting the city, um, through a way you don't have to, you don't have to drive a car. Um, and, you know, we had talked a lot about this in years past. And so I think it's a good time to go ahead and connect it and make it, um, get a plan to get her to go forward with it.
Sidewalks on our dime, D O T's dime.
You know, it's, it's got, so the funding is the critical component to all of this.
Right.
And that's part of why this is going to take, you know, five months to get done because they're going to be giving us recommendations on where to find the funding. Um, part of this is what grants we can go after, what state monies we can go after, what federal grants we can go after. Um, the state, city probably will have to put some skin in the game for this. But, um, you know, I think that there's enough programs out there as we've been talking about with all these things that can fund these things at some level. So that's part of this. So I don't have answer yet, but I will come to plan. Okay, next. Um, this got into just some zoning compliance. The main thing we realized is that our zoning code, we do need to take a heavy look at it. And we are, um, considering, I'm looking at essentially bringing it back to you guys' proposal to have the group come in and redo it for us. Um, our zoning code has been built, built up over years and it needs to be, uh, considered. And then the main thing we talked about too is that we need to connect the groups and who. It doesn't necessarily have to be us, but this is just a recommendation, but to have, um, more communication and dialogue with the different entities like Sunoco and, and, um, education groups and whatnot. So it's just good, good, uh, conversations to have. That's all. Our next. Um, she did an Athenian oath, which she, I can tell Irene really likes this, but basically it's your civic duty to, um, to work together and make it better than it is and leave it better than you have. We say, we say it all the time, it's better than it has to be. So let's go forward. Our next, that might be, so next steps. Um, this is where we had a really intense week, uh, but we realized that, you know, we had our first round of people. We needed to talk to more people. Um, and so the group will be coming back. Um, one big group that we didn't get a chance to because they're not here, the students. Um, so Coker students, we want to hear what they're, they're, they're here for, you know, for two years for governor's school and four years for Coker. What is their image of the city when they come here? That's invaluable information to get. Um, and so we're going to get that information. And then we also have several other people that we're recommending to come talk to. We also plan, because if we're extending the scope out, we need to continue some conversations with Fourth Street and with Sixth Street in the South Hartsfield community. Um, we had some great conversations that were started. We need to finish those. And so I think that there's some good opportunity for that. So in the next couple of months, uh, Sharon and I will be working together with, um, with our team, Matt, to, um, schedule up new meetings and potential meetings and more and more focused meetings. Uh, we did our first big round. So the shretts are done and we got some great data out of it, but we need to meet with some individuals now. Um, and so we're going to be doing that in the next few months. And the commitment that we've made is that we're going to be keeping the citizens involved and aware of what we're doing along the way. So every month we want to give the updates. This was the first one. And of course, we have the public here. Thank you Nancy for representing. Um, so, uh, her, her job is to go out and, and spread the word. Um, but no, we're going to be putting this out across multiple because we have to keep them engaged. Um, we can, we have a chance here to really, I think, rebuild some, uh, community buy-in. And so let's do it. Uh, but that's our next steps. And we do plan to having a final plan by December twenty twenty-four. Yes.
Encouraging. Who does not do online and we need to prepare some paper survey, let me know.
We have those ready, yeah.
Let you, um, let you know that now.
But we, we're planning on doing that because we wanted all of them by the end of August. And if anybody, you know, any groups you're associated with, you know, share that link, share that, um, share the research. Um, it's on our website. We have some copies.
We'll give you a file.
It's my, on my.
So just let us know. If somebody says, well, I can't find the copy, you know, come call.
Well, it, that, that's good, a good idea because you will have people that, um, don't have internet access.
Right.
But they can talk to someone and, you know, be interviewed and then put their quick, um, answers down and then bring those in.
We're trying to get where everybody can and get the survey back in. And we'll have, um, drop, city hall is perfect drop-off spot.
Right.
You can scan that right now, yeah.
And, um, what you see today is, remember a draft.
Yeah, it's true.
I mean, there's something that we already know need, 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 um, changed up a little bit, but it is a draft.
Yeah, I want, I, we're, as long as we, as long as we post draft on it across, but I want this presentation available for everyone to see. To get into that data, some of the stuff you guys can see, um, the, the, the idea here is that we want all the information we can. There's no such thing as too much here. Um, and, and that's why we hired a consultant. It's their job to, you know, quantify it and put it into perspective that we can understand. Okay? That's all I have.
Dan, also, I'm, I'm glad to hear the commitment from the city to follow through.
Yeah.
On what has been done since I've been coming to council meetings back in the nineties. Um, we, we have to follow through, we get, and we have to have the city's commitment to walk with us. We can't walk it alone.
Well, and something we recommended from that is that we want to have, we certainly want to have year-long projects, three-year, five-year, ten-year projects. But there's some things that we can do now that are, um, relatively, you know, not terribly cost, you know, prohibitive, but things that can make a difference now. And so we're looking at those now. So while this process is going on, I want people to feel like they've gotten something for their efforts. And that's the worst thing you can do is get some to work and then they don't get anything for it. And so we're going to try and get some stuff even before the master plan is done, start incorporating some of the ideas that we've seen. I mean, like I said, the information we've gotten has been invaluable, guys. Um, and I encourage you guys, continue talking about with your constituents. Um, force them to give your, their opinions because they're, it matters, uh, what they're saying.
Ms. Mac, you hit on one of the three points that I think are very important as we continue in this process is one that we, we, we follow through. With what we say we're going to do and enact as much of this plan as we can. You know, some parts of it might, things have changed and they won't make sense, which is fine, but there's, there's that. There is, um, you just talked about expanding the scope of the plan a little bit and, and it really being a master plan for all of Hartsfield, the whole city, united, one Hartsfield, whatever words you want to use. Um, which is a big commitment, but it's, I think it's important.
It's something that we can do.
Either we can, we absolutely can do. We got to, I think, one of the best teams in, in, in the state, if not beyond. The third is a part of our job here on this council is going to be making sure that the conversation s- stays focused on the future. Because so much of the criticism and frustration we heard of the shretts was, is more about what had happened or not happened in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I think that we, we can do that. If, you know, when we hear people talk about their disappointments or frustrations or, or whatever, negative, negative words you want to pick, just guide them and say, that. I understand that that happened, but this is about the future of Hartsfield. And if, if we, if we stay focused on that and stay positive about it, it'd help, I think, get the buy-in we need from the citizens as well. Those are the points I wanted to make, but.
Yes, we can show them where we're going and they can see progress.
That's right.
They can continue to see progress, then you will not only convince them, but you will empower them to want to help. Instead of just sitting back and watch, well, let's, let's sit back and see what they're going to do for us.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
When you do it that way, when you give people, um, a goal and an objective and give them the tools that they need. You, you, like I said, you give them benchmarks and you give them, and let them go. And then you're always there. Because any other way, it just will not work. And, and that's what's continued to happen. So that's why I'm so elated about the fact that we now have the commitment to go forward. But it's, it's been said that, you know, we look in our rearview mirrors. But it's incorrect because this is what some parts of Hartsfield see through their windshield. So if we do this, then that'll cure that.
Anything else before we close the work session? Not that we can, don't have to stop talking, but, um, I have a power partners appointment, so, um. Hearing no objection, uh, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
For being here.